Anything fun?
Oh, yeah, lots of fun.
One of the things.
Okay.
So it started getting bad now.
They're doing.
Do you by any chance have an extra?
Oh.
Yes.
Ten nothing.
We're in Cilomarcas.
Yeah.
All right.
Whole house.
Nice.
Two home runs. Is it over by a certain inning or finished in the sixth? They loaded the bases.
I know.
Or like two or three. Walk two run to.
Something I wrote. Right up there. Go up to open forum.
You get the text right section.
Write your name on open forum. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, buddy.
Right up there. Go up to open forum.
You get the text right section.
Write your name on open forum. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, buddy.
Mm hmm. Yeah. We see ya. We see ya. Yeah, sometimes when it shows up.
Color coordinated.
And he told me, he told me to make sure after April first, if you get invited, or May thirty first one at least, to make sure I invite you down to the keep, then we will do our fishing. I don't know that I need this right now. This chair is easier. Just your legs going in. I did not. Didn't see her. Call the role, please. Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Loeb?
Here.
Councilman Best?
Sergeant.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
There's a quorum present.
Thank you. I'll stand, please, for the invocation by Councilman. I'd like to ask the, um, uh, the girls from the, is it Littleby? Softball, can you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? We would like that. Just come right here.
Go up here.
Go over here. We face the flag. And you start it. Thank you. Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February twenty seventh city council meeting. It's so exciting to see so many people here with us tonight. And welcome to those who are joining us virtually. Um, we're going to get started with, um, the awards and presentations. And we're going to defer, um, item four A, uh, the presentation for the Eastern Forum dedication to the March thirteenth meeting. So the next presentation is by Caballero, Bierman, Yerena, and Garcia, our, um, comprehensive financial, uh, report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Enrique Yerena, and I served as the engagement partner on the city's financial statements, uh, the audit of the city financial statements for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I'm here tonight to give you a brief presentation of our reports that are included within this document, as well as walk you through a few components. The first item I'd like to highlight is on Roman numeral six. This is the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is a very prestigious award that the city received for the last report that was submitted, and we're confident that this report contains all the necessary components to receive it again. On page one, here you see our independent auditors report. And the format of the report slightly changed for this year since new standards were implemented. It's, it starts off with the opinion section, which is the most important section. First, it starts by talking about what we audited. And it states that we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of and for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The next paragraph has our opinion, and here you see an unmodified opinion, and the only kind of opinion that you want to be associated with. And it states that, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two." Now, the basis for our opinion is the next paragraph, and in essence, it discusses the standards we followed in performing our audit. And it states that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. The responsibilities of management are covered in the next section. And in essence, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Our responsibilities as your auditor are covered in the next paragraph, and it follows on to the next page. And in essence, during our audit, we need to exercise professional and maintain professional skepticism. We need to identify and assess the risk of material misstatement of the financial statements. And during these procedures, they include examining on a test basis evidence regarding the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. We have to obtain an understanding of your evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies and conclude whether in our judgment their conditions or events considering the aggregate that raised substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern for a reasonable period of time. And when we look at all this information, we report back to you not only in this report, but also we, a required communication letter that I'm gonna go through at the end of this presentation. Basically, the layout of the report, all of this was being done before, but now it makes us put it in writing, which is clear to the users. Um, the last section of the report that I want to highlight is the other reporting required by government auditing standards. And this makes reference to our Yellow Book Report, which is covered in the compliance section when I get to that section. And in essence, we'll report to you in that report if there's any findings related to the financial statement audit or compliance related to the audit, which I'll cover that in a second. Pages four through twenty of this document contain management's discussion and analysis. And this is a plain English explanation of the results of the city. And it talks about what happened this year, compares it to the prior year, and it tells you what changed and why. So it's, it's very, it's a very good section for the readers to use. And it's probably the easiest one to, to understand when you go through this entire document. The basic financial statements begin on page twenty-one, and they go through page thirty-one. And if you, just ten thousand foot view, if you look at these documents, at these sections, uh, the first couple pages, pages twenty-one and twenty-two are your government-wide financial statements, which is the entire snapshot of the financial position of the city, governmental activities for your governmental funds, and then business type activities for your enterprise funds. And then it gives you a total for the organization as a whole, and this is presented in full accrual, uh, accounting. The governmental fund, financial statements follow these two pages. They're on pages twenty-three to twenty-six, and these are the fund level statements that are presented under the modified accrual basis of accounting. And it includes two reconciliation pages that show you the differences between the government-wide financial statements and those fund level statements that are presented. Pages twenty-seven through twenty-nine have the proprietary fund statements. These are also full accrual, and the total of this statement is presented as the business type activities in the statement is in the front. And pages thirty to thirty-one summarize all of the pension information for the two pensions that you have. They're presented as one column. And it gives you a balance sheet and income statement for the pension on pages thirty and thirty-one. Pages thirty-two through seventy-six of the document contain the notes to the financial statements. And these, the information in these pages give you additional color and clarity of the amounts that are presented on the financial statements. And the final section in this document that I'm gonna cover is the compliance section. And this compliance section has the remainder of our reports. And it begins on page one thirteen with that Yellow Book Report that I mentioned. Uh, this Yellow Book Report allows us to report any findings related to the financial statement audit. And we're pleased to report that we did not have any findings to report to you at this time. The city also met the requirement to have a federal single audit conducted this year. And as a result, there's a report, a related schedule, and some disclosures that are in this compliance section. We're also pleased to note that we did not have any findings related to compliance or internal control over compliance to report to you at this time. And finally, the management letter in accordance with rules of the auditor general is a required letter that we need to include every year. And on page one twenty-two, this is the second page of this letter, it has two sections that allows us to bring to the attention of the readers of the financials if there were any recommendations to improve financial management or any immaterial instances of non-compliance that did not raise to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness. We're also pleased to note that we did not have anything to, anything to report related to these sections. The last item I'm going to cover is the communication to those statutory governance at conclusion. And there's two main things here that I want to point out. First, we did not encounter any difficulties in dealing with management. In fact, William always does an excellent job. Management here is great, and they're extremely responsive. They actually agitate us to make sure that we're on top of what we're doing, which, which is great. Um, and we did not have any disagreements with management during the course of the audit. So this concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions? No. I have a few.
Sure.
Um. And I know this is a draft.
Yes.
Okay. On page four, which is financial highlights.
Okay.
The very last paragraph. The city's total debt decreased by approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand million. I think that million may not. Yes, that's what I figured. Because if not, our debt is like eleven billion or something. Okay, so I think it should be, uh, by approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
And just remove the million.
Correct.
Okay. Um. And then on page twelve. And I guess this is just a question. I'm trying to understand this. On page twelve, um, this interest on long-term debt line for the, I guess, three quarters down?
Yes.
On the page, it says negative, um, a decrease of twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is if the city debt went down six point three percent as per our financial highlights page, um, why is our interest on long-term debt down twenty-five percent? Like, why is that so much better? Or how were we able to do that?
I mean, I, I have to go into the detail of the numbers, but it, this is comparing the total for twenty-one versus the total actually incurred for twenty-two.
Right.
The total for twenty-two is twenty-five percent less.
Right, but our, our decrease from twenty-one to twenty-two is six point three percent.
You're talking about total, the debt in total?
Our city debt, I'm going by the financial highlight page. Wait, let me see which page that is.
I think it's on page eight. There's a decrease of three point six percent. Is that what you're referring to on page eight?
Yes, is that on page eight?
Yeah, let me see, let me see if the death footnote gives me a little more clarity on that. Because when you look at the city as a whole, depending on the timing of when the debt was added, right? There, there were additions to debt that happened this year and reductions of principal payments. So we'd have to look at the timing as to when the debt came online. Is there was any changes in the interest rates of the new debt versus the old debt? I don't think that the change in total debt compared to the change in the interest expense incurred is gonna be comparable. We can't look at it. We can't expect to have a similar percentage just because the numbers are very different. One's a lot bigger than the other.
So which is the one?
Well, there, there are two different numbers. One is total debt, and the other one's the interest expense related to it. So I guess the question is, why aren't the percentages similar? Is your question? I'd have to look at the detail to see why.
Okay, it just, I'm wondering how that looks.
Did, did we consolidate any debt?
Well, there's, there's, you've continued to pay down certain pieces of debt. You go to page fifty-six, this is your debt roll forward. You had, you had one point four million dollars of pay downs in, in debt. But you had an increase of five hundred and forty thousand in the business type activities for a capital improvement revenue bond note. Depending on the timing, there may or may not have been interest expense incurred depending on when that debt was issued. So it has to do with the timing as well when the debt came online. And the interest rates related to new debt versus the continued pay down of the older debt. So we'd have, we'd have to analyze that. But I don't think that it's, it's apples and oranges, looking at the total debt versus just the interest expense line item. So I don't think that, uh.
Could you take a look at that and see? I don't understand.
Before we get, uh, if we look at page fifty-five from here.
Uh huh.
If you look on top where it says long-term debt, number seven, and you'll see by year, the debt payments, the principal and interest. And you'll see that as, as we pay down these debts, the interest portion goes down every year. So that's why you'll see a bigger increase in interest debt expense. Because all of these bond issues, the interest payment goes down every year as you pay it off.
All right. Thank you. And then I have, it just seemed like a big difference, the, the two numbers.
I understand.
Understand. Okay, now, um, I do have another question on um, page eight. Um, that, that's the under the deferred inflows?
Yes.
Line, it's two hundred and fourteen percent. So that's six million from last year to this year. Is that from the American Rescue Act or?
No, no, deferred inflows, these, these are related to pension and, uh, uh, OPEB or other post-employment liabilities. Uh, and this comes from the pension, uh, plan. Um, and he can explain to you what deferred inflows.
Yeah, so every, every year, there's a, there's a calculation looking at the assumptions, and there those deferred inflows and outflows, one is amortized in the next period, the other ones are amortized over the remaining service life. So every year, you get a valuation for both OPEB and pensions, and these numbers change. So it's not unusual to see volatility in the fluctuation from one year to the next, depending on the assumptions, the expected rate of return of pension plan investments, and all the other assumptions that impact the plan.
If you look at page twenty-one, which is the, uh, the actual statement of net position, and you'll see under halfway down, you'll see deferred outflows. And it says related to pensions and OPEB. And it gives you the amount. You'll see deferred outflows halfway down the page, and then three quarters of the way down, you'll see deferred inflows. Those all have to be, uh, do with, uh, pensions and other post-employment benefits.
Okay, so that, the deferred inflows is all pension, really?
It's all, the deferred outflows are all pension, the deferred inflows, uh, is pensions, OPEB, and the taxes.
Pensions and what else did you say?
OPEB, other post-employment benefits. Uh, taxes received in advance at seventy thousand, those are prepaid, uh, business licenses.
Yeah.
Uh, years ago, it used to be posted as underrend revenue on top, but they changed the gas fee, and now they want it shown as deferred inflows.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and um, this is page, it's really hard to read, I think it's ninety-five. Page ninety-five.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, three quarters down where it says, um, property taxes under general revenues and other I can barely read it.
Yes.
Other changes in, in net position?
Yes.
Under property taxes. I'm just trying to figure out, okay, if, if the assessed property values went up nine point two percent, which is what we have on page II, and our millage went down only one point six percent, which is, I mean, which is a substantial amount. I don't mean that, I mean, just mean it's not the same as the assessed property. Um, went down one point six percent. Then how does our property tax revenues fall from twenty-one to twenty-two? Like, it's nine? Nine eight oh one and twenty-two. Two and a half, two point six percent.
I'm on twenty-two, that's when we lowered, we went with the rollback rate. Seven point two oh nine five. So normally, the rollback rate, that's what happens. And it also depends on how many people take advantage of the discount, whether they pay four percent discount, three percent discount. So it fluctuates every year depending on that.
That's all, that's all I had for right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
None, Mayor, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just show the extraordinary focus.
You think they didn't find that interesting?
Youngsters later.
They are, they're amazing young girls. And you can tell your teachers tomorrow that you don't have to do your math homework, that the council excused you from it because you heard enough math tonight.
Oh, somebody's gonna be trouble.
Right, we'll write you a note. Um, okay. Let's, um, move on to our next, do we have, uh, the Miami Springs Chamber of Commerce present here, uh, president here tonight? Great. Welcome, we have a presentation or, um, I guess, an introduction about the council, the chamber from you.
Thank you for having me, uh, Mayor, Councilwoman, City Manager, Vice Mayor, everyone that's here. Uh, I, I was actually gonna say did a phenomenal job with the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I was, I played, uh, EMI baseball here as well, which, you know, brings me to what makes our city special, right? I mean, you don't see that anywhere else in Miami. We have our own little gem, our own little city within a big city that I think makes us unique to the most, to, to the rest of Miami. Uh, that's one of the things that makes our chamber unique as well is that I think it presents a wonderful opportunity, uh, to have local business owners create a closer relationship with our local city government in promoting these businesses. Uh, now, obviously, we had the pandemic come, uh, we lost a little bit of momentum in building, uh, our chamber. But the momentum is there again, and, and we're working hard to build membership by way of events. Uh, and, and, and we're gonna bring in other events as well that hopefully will highlight the uniqueness of our community for our business owners to help grow our business. But grow our business like Miami Springs goes its business, right? Always keeping into consideration our unique feel, our unique sense of community, that one thing that makes us unique as both Miami Springs residents, like I said. I've lived here since the eighties. Uh, I understand what we love about our city, but I also understand what our business, our, our business owners want. As I do come from a family of generations of business owners, I'm a business owner myself. And I think that a chamber within a community like this is so important. But getting the word out there and letting other small business owners, specifically mom and pop business owners, a lot of Miami Springs residents don't know this, but we have over four or five hundred business owners that are small, mom and pop owners, some operated out of their home, home-based businesses. Um, if you can help me, uh, share the, the importance of this chamber with our local residents, a business owner, and I greatly appreciate it. Once again, everyone, thank you for giving me the time to present myself. My name is Raul Pistone, by the way. Um, we own a flower shop right here over the bridge in Iliá for over sixty years. And I myself am a mortgage advisor that has been doing more than just twenty-seven years. Uh, I hope to see some of you there. I hope to have your support, uh, whoever is a business owner. You don't have to be a business owner to, uh, visit, by the way. You can come, introduce yourself, and let us know what type of information you'd like us to relay to our local, uh, council. You know, we're gonna be working together. Uh, I did invite you, Eric, thank you for coming up last year. I'd love for the rest of you to make it to our next, uh, event. We do have one every month. And you can feel free to reach out to me, raulpistone@gmail.com. And I'll personally take the time to invite you myself. Love to have you guys, uh, obviously, input. We have a past president in the crowd right over here that introduced himself to me. We'd love to have you come by as well and get some insight on work then, and how, and how we could make it work now. So once again, everyone, thank you for your time. Raul Pistone, you're Miami Springs Airport Area Chamber of Commerce President. Have a good evening.
And so just to make sure everyone heard, if they wanted to get in, in touch with you, um, your email again?
Is.
Or, or how would they get in touch with the chamber to, to be part of the chamber?
You can go online, we do have a website, Miami Springs Airport Area Chamber. And we'll have the information logged on there. Uh, but you can call me as well, three oh five, seven two five, five six two six. And my name is Raul Pesto, lit, email at gmail dot com. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we have a lot of, of new businesses coming up soon, so hopefully they'll be joining the chamber also. Okay, so, um, now we move to open forum. And open forum, uh, is an opportunity for residents to speak to the council members. You have, uh, we're all ears. It's a one-way form of communication. You speak to us, we don't respond, but you have our attention. Um, so, and it's available, anything you wanna speak on. Um, open forum is two minutes. We ask that you keep your, um, presentation, questions, what, I mean, uh, what, however, whatever you want to say to us to two minutes. But if there's more than one of you that wants to speak on the same thing, you can also do that, okay? All right, so Erica times, um, you, and when you hear the timer go off, you know, kindly, um, just know, let the next person come up. Um, and if you have some questions after the meeting, um, you're welcome to speak with our city manager, our staff, or any one of the, us to follow up on whatever you speak to us about, okay? All right, so the first person that we have today is Mikey.
I'm Michael Gavilla, two two three North Brad Point Santa. I'm here to support Tammy to see if she would be the next city manager. And maybe we won't do an interview search, but I respect whatever the council's opinion.
Thank you, Mikey. Okay, um, now we have Janelle Perez scheduled to speak.
Hello, I'm Jamel Perez, I live on seven fifty Shadow Way. I'm here today to ask the council to consider, uh, issue that I actually am new to baseball, softball, all those kind of issues. And on Saturday, we had a game from, it was a doubleheader from nine to two P M. And we sat in the sun from nine to two P M. We tried putting up tents, we tried putting up little umbrellas on the chairs. Um, but the, there's not a lot of shade, it comes in through the sides, we're like lowering legs. We're trying our best to keep, uh, under the shade. And what we really want is to see if we could get some shade structures, um, put up on the field for Prince Field in particular, that's where we're playing. And I've realized that there's usually a baseball game, a softball game, or some type of game going on in Prince Field all the time. There's either practices or games all weekend. So I feel like this would be a really good improvement to our, um, parks. Uh, they're always being in use. Our parks are beautiful, and, and the good thing about our city is that so many of our residents already use them. Um, that I think that these sun shades would be a very big improvement to them that is very much needed. Improvement to them that is very much needed for, I mean, uh, my daughter was playing on the second part of the, of the doubleheader, and she didn't have a place to sit. She had to go sit in the dugout with everybody else because that's the only one that has a shade. So, um, I would like for you guys to consider using some, uh, city funds in order to fund those sunshades.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and the girls support this? How many, the girls, raise your hands if you support, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, um, uh, the next person we have for open forum is Rosemary Noble.
Hi, hi. So, um, on behalf of the building official and the entire code and building department, um, I would like to hi, for you to highly consider Ms. Tammy Romero as, um. Our new city manager, um, throughout the years, she has been nothing but an asset to the city, um, with her loyalty and her can-do attitude. Uh, and her willingness to always step up to the plate on any and all matters, she is, in our opinion, the best fit for the position. We all have grown to respect and admire her. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Okay, that is the end of open forum, so now we will move to approval of council minutes. And you know better. Happy, you're on, oh, you wrote it on the other one, okay, yes. Yes, come on up.
Quickie easy. Uh, long ago, there was a giant flagpole erected.
Say your name and.
Happy Rosson, six twenty-eight Palmetto Drive. Long ago, there was a giant flagpole, uh, planted near the outgoing bridge in Miami Springs, I think Sprint was the people that erected the tower. And it was my understanding that they were to keep a flag on that pole throughout the course of its existence, and I haven't seen a flag on that pole in years. So I would urge council to find out perhaps what the story on that is, unless you already know.
You were one council meeting too late. We talked about it last council.
Well, great, thank you, I missed it.
You still wanna speak on the agenda item, right?
Mr. Anderson?
Happy, you still wanna speak on the agenda item for the golf course, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, all right, so that ends the open forum, and, um, we'll move to approval of council minutes for, uh, the February thirteenth meeting. Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilman Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to public hearings, um, and we have public hearings for two ordinances. So, uh, let's see, ordinance eight A, Heidi, do you wanna read that first?
Yes.
This is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter one five zero zoning code, article two, signs of the city's code of ordinances. To address current case law requirements and to establish specific standards and regulations related to signs and renumber other sections. Providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and council, we heard first reading of this ordinance on February thirteenth, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, my partner Susan Travarthen. Uh, and our, our colleague Shanae Wood were heavily involved in updating the sign code over the course of the last year, along with the city manager and staff. At first reading, we received a lot of really great feedback from you all, and we've incorporated that into the sign code that you have before you. Um, there's a few updates, the memorandum that summarizes everything, there's a few, uh. Line changes that we need to update, but we can either go through them, or we can just dive into questions, my partner Susan Travarthen is online via Zoom to answer any questions you may have. And, um, with that, this is a public hearing, so if you wanna take public comment before or after, just before we take a vote, we do need to say public comment. All right, let's do that, let's open it up for a public hearing, is there anyone, you don't have to sign up to speak, is there anyone that's here to speak for, um, the sign ordinance, the revision of our sign ordinance? Okay, then I'll close the public, public hearing. Any discussion?
Thank you for making those changes, you're good.
Counsel?
Good.
Heidi, I have. Two. I think, one of them is, and it may be in here, but I don't remember seeing it, and Susan, hi, welcome, thank you for being here again. Um, is she online?
She is.
Okay.
Yes, I am, I don't know if you can hear me.
Okay, yes, now we do, thank you for being here again, thank you for making the revisions from our last meeting, I don't know if it's on here or not. I might have missed it, but do we have anything in there that, once somebody puts up a sign, that has to be professional quality? It can't just be a, you know. Piece of plywood and, you know, I take a marker or paint, I'd like it to. Code to be able to enforce if, you know, obviously some are folkish type sign of folk art or something, and it's acceptable, but, um. To have some discretion as to, um, something that just.
So we did, I'll, I'll let Susan address it further, but we did update that the signs have to be maintained in good condition. And have to be, they have to come down if they're tattered or worn or updated, um, as far as painted signs, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think. We did prohibit painted signs, so I think that might address some of the concerns you have, Mayor. Susan, is there anything else in this code that might address the mayor's concern?
Uh, yes, I would direct you to line nine twenty-seven in your backup, and there it talks about signs being in good condition, presenting a neat, neat appearance. It doesn't talk specifically about the materials that are used, but, um, if that's a concern, either tonight or at a subsequent meeting with the input of your planning staff. Um, there, there could be something added regarding the fabrication, if, if there's a specific method that you prefer.
I don't know so much of a specific method, um, what I'd like it is to look professional, and this is just looking forward that if something were, um. You know, just, um. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, maybe it's as simple as adding to A.
Uh, something that, yeah, code enforcement, the discretion to, um, and, and code enforcement, and I guess Chris, discretion of something that's just not up to par, that, um, they can, um. We have something in there with a little bit of teeth to, um.
Mayor, I feel like, I, I understand where you're going with this, because you obviously don't want, you know, like a piece of torn, you know, side of a box with like some written in marker. Um, but that, it seems like kind of a subjective judgment call, and I think there's a place for it, and I think that. On line nine thirty-one, where it talks about that it has to present a neat appearance, this whole section, I think that could be applied to something that would, uh, that, that would look. You know, like be a detractor to, to the eye.
Neat and professional appearance, or some word like that, that, um.
If I may, Madam Mayor. Uh, I think we could add something particularly because this is the permanent sign section, that it would be appropriate to add something about. All signs shall be professionally, um, fabricated and installed. And that would give you a standard that could be referred to, um, as opposed to someone hand drawing something or whatever.
Okay, that's, that sounds wonderful, we could add that if the council agrees with that. And, um, the other thing.
Mayor, I'm sorry, before we step away from that, so that would be a change here on the commercial permanent signs, did you want to extend that request to? This is in commercial areas, do you want that in residential areas as well?
I don't. I don't think so, because I can see somebody putting up lemonade sign, or you know what I'm saying, or garage sale, or, right.
If I may, if I may, those would be temporary signs, so if you look at line ten thirty-five, um, you're talking about a development identification sign, a directional sign, and an institutional use sign. So it may well be, uh, your preference to have those be professionally, um, manufactured and installed.
Yeah, Chris is here, Chris, the, the mayor's concern, um, about the sign code is how can we avoid, uh, people putting up signs that are not professional, uh, you know.
For our commercial.
Well, we're not gonna allow painted signs anymore, and that takes a lot of that away, I mean, if they have to be professionally done, they have to be individual letters that you have to buy from the sign company. That pretty much narrows it down, they can't just choose what they wanna do or paint the wall as they would like, they work with a sign company, select a letter style, letter size. And then it really, it should take care of itself, you really shouldn't, we shouldn't have that problem.
I, I, I think we should have what Susan mentioned of professionally, what was it, they said manufactured, made?
Yeah. So. Prefer, professionally, professionally designed.
We'll add something.
Section one fifty dash zero three three.
I believe I said that, uh, made or manufactured, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm trying to, to prevent our code enforcement, Rosemary is here, is trying to make these decisions, you know, it's, you know, that when something isn't. You know, and, and obviously, you know, we just think it's shoddy, and it may never occur.
It certainly can't help you, it's like.
Right. It gives them the ability to make that judgment call of.
The fact that we require individual letters though really means you need to turn to a sign company and have, and they have to be professionally made, but. Belt-in suspenders never, uh, air, so.
Through the chair. Um, I wanna piggyback on that, because I did see at least two signs while walking, there was, it was staked in, it was, uh, cardboard. Handwriting with whatever message it is that they wanna do, it doesn't matter, but that looked aesthetically not pleasing. Even if it's on their, on their house, it was just like, if you're gonna go through that much effort to, to make a statement, you might as well catch the attention in a. And, and a good way versus like, what is that?
And this is a commercial sign?
No, no, it was residential, I can send you guys pictures, but, um, I just thought it was just.
What I'm talking about with the individual letters and all that, that does not.
No, I know, but I'm tapping into like what Heidi was talking about, she wanted to clarify an item there, if she wanted it just in commercial, or if we wanted to, uh, make that. Uh, in the residential areas, but I did, it's funny that you brought that up, because I did see two signs that were with permanent black marker on cardboard. Stuck on one of those wooden sticks I use for, for paint. And placed on, so I don't know if that's maybe, again, what you're referring to.
I think, Mayor, for the most part, with residential, though, you know, I, I don't think we have to stipulate commercial, and, you know, people have the little broad needle sign.
I took a determining factor is whether it's a permanent or temporary, and if it's temporary, if you try to. Like, I, I, it's just gonna open up to somebody who has a garage sale today, and they put up a sign.
That's our.
Professionally, they're willing to retire that. We can leave.
Residential.
Right.
It's just that I don't know if it's permanent or temporary, so I don't know.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so temporary is different, and if I can direct your attention to line eight ten. It says shall be constructed of durable weatherproof material, cardboard is not durable weather, weatherproof material. Um, and then at first reading, you had asked for the maintained in good condition, and all you need is one rain, and that sign that the, um. Uh, council member mentioned is probably gonna be subject to removal.
Perfect, that clears my, thank you. All right, and then I had one other question, and. I see it on here, um, page two of two. Um, is it three, did we agree to three yard signs that a person can have?
And what you. What you asked for was in the timeframe prior to an election, that there should be the equivalent of five. And so what I've provided to you is in that year-round sign allotment, I've provided nine square feet, which is the equivalent of three of those standard-sized signs. And then in that timeframe before an election, that ninety days, you get the right to the additional two, so you add those two together, and you get to the five that the council requested.
Okay, so. I know we, um, we discussed having, letting residents have the ability at election time to have five signs, because there's five members here, and, you know, if it's a, a, a national election, there's the president, and senate, and congressman, or whatever. But year-round, that a resident can have. A little sign in front of their house, they can have three or two.
It's written now to say three, if they are standard-sized, and any, the, the, the maximum size of any one sign now is three square feet, that's standard size.
I think that's a lot, I think two is reasonable, I'm, I'm thinking of the neighborhood, and, you know, if you have a sign outside. You know, two signs in your neighbor's yard is fine, I think three starts. And, and I'm talking about election signs or these special signs, but year-round.
But not to mention that, that seems big to me, three by three is not, I remember I looked for the standard political sign, just as a, you know, a frame of reference, like bigger than a breadbox, and I remembered it was like two by three, right?
No, one and a half.
By three, right?
By, one and a half. By half by two.
One and a half by two.
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Three square feet.
The signs, that's, that's huge.
It's not, it's three, it's three square feet, uh, just, I wanna be clear that we're hearing each other, it's one and a half feet by two feet.
I got you, I got you, I got you, not three by three.
No.
Talking about three signs.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
In a yard, I think that's a little excessive for most neighbors, and I know the majority of, you know, people aren't gonna have three signs in front of their yard, but it is a lot.
So, Madam Mayor, for, for point of information, as you discuss this, um, you could propose that line eight thirty-six would be changed from nine to six. And then you would change line eight forty-five from six to nine, and that would still give you the five signs during an election, but it would give you only two in the year round.
Two regularly, and then you get three more in the lead-up to an election, totally fine.
And I think that's reasonable to, you know, everyone feels like they can have their sign, but we're not, you know.
I kinda agree with you, I thought we had, we had decided on two last.
Is, um, are we in agreement with that?
Yeah, so.
Make that for a change for two signs the rest of the time, and then up to five, whatever the math is.
Right.
Girls, you figure it out.
So, so to be clear. What Susan just said is on line eight thirty-six, we'll reduce it from nine to six. There's no change on subpart B of that section, and then on subpart two A on line eight forty-five, the six will be increased to nine.
Correct.
Yes.
That come out to two year-round and five for an election, okay.
I, I will say. It could be like four small signs, but.
Chart, um, Susan put together this great chart that's part of your packet, and it has the size of a standard campaign sign as two feet by one and a half feet. So if you get to the six, if you wanna get to two campaign signs, that gives you six square feet, so by doing this adjustment, that's how we're getting, okay?
Yeah. I think that's reasonable, I think we're all.
You can have two small signs, or you can have one sign that's six square feet.
Correct.
No, no, you may not, no, I wanna be clear about that, thank you, William, um, it says up in line. Eight twenty-six, each sign must be no larger than three square feet.
Yeah.
My apologies, Susan, okay.
No problem, just trying to keep us all clear.
I think everybody's getting scared of the definition of square feet here, yeah, I think that's, that's the problem.
Okay, um, I don't have anything else, any other questions?
No, I, these changes are appropriate.
Okay.
So with the, so with the changes that council requested, which are just those two today, um, is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb?
Aye.
Councilman Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Eight B is an ordinance on second reading, does an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, amending section thirty-four dash sixteen. Leave of the city's code of ordinances to update the bereavement leave policy, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date, mayor and council. Um, we heard this ordinance on February thirteenth on first reading, there have been no changes between first and second reading, and this is a public hearing.
Let me open it up for public hearing, is there anyone that wants to speak on, uh, bereavement policy? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Um, is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? Motion, well, motion. Is there a motion? All right, any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Just if I might know before before you call, whether I like if you throw Collins for the time enough that he put into this, um, Phil Wittenbell. And a credit to to the to your opinion of how your employees function in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lou.
Hi.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so we move to nine A. Part of the consent agenda. Let William or Heidi read that.
I'll go ahead and read it. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, selecting Aeration Technology Inc. for construction and landscaping services. For the Miami Springs Golf and Country Club Golf Course Revitalization Project pursuant to invitation to bid number zero four dash twenty two twenty three. Authorizing negotiation and execution of a construction contract in an amount not to exceed. Two million, six hundred thirty five dollars, thirty five thousand, four hundred eighty five dollars and fifty cents, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, and we do have someone who wishes to speak on that agenda item, so um, Tappy Rosin, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, Tappy Rossen, six twenty eight, Almetto Drive. Um, I was selected as one of the five members of the golf course committee, which was formed by council. To review proposals and make recommendations to council when we bought the golf course from the city of Miami in nineteen ninety seven. The other members of those committees were Dr. Jimmy James, Pastor Albert Schmidt, Phyllis Cozy, and Doug Orr. Who've moved away and who are now deceased, and you're happy to know that I'm still on the job. The uh, I don't believe the committee was ever officially abandoned, nonetheless. Um. I played golf at our golf course for at least twice a week for the best forty six years. I might add in many assorted conditions, the worst of which included dead tadpoles in the soggy, muddy, and grassless fifteenth fairway some years ago. Paul Odell and Laurie Bland have made vast improvements despite what they inherited at the start. They, with the financial support of the city, have cobbled together a better product. And in turn, the golf operations has finally produced a profit. For the first time in two decades. Last year, the course scored a whopping thirty six thousand rounds. It's significant to note that until this profitable year, we taxpayers have laid out hundreds of thousands of dollars to support the struggling course. This hundred and eighty three acre golf property represents ten percent of the spring's entire landmass. The golf course is visited visited by tens of thousands of people from around the world. Additionally, hundreds of residents walk and ride their bikes around it and admire the beautiful space. It's in everyone's best interest to protect this historic open space and city asset. By bringing it up to a desirable and competitive level, thus maintaining valuable customers and continuing profitability. We should be aware that with the closing of yet another golf course, Mel Reese, soon to become a soccer stadium. We will attract an even greater volume of golfers on our course. The hardiness and health of the turf to recover from this volume of play is critical. Completely upgrading will avoid expensive difficulties and reap financial and physical reward. The time is right. We delayed this project for a swimming pool some years ago and City Hall mold reconstruction more recently. It has not ever been an issue should we renovate the course. It's only been a when do we do it question. It is time finally to bring our city's crown jewel to the level of its full potential. And create an even greater source of pride for our much cherished community. I strongly encourage the city leaders to proceed now with this upgrade, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ted. Thanks, Ted. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Right, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lou.
Hi.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. All right.
That'd be, I changed my mind.
George.
I do want to thank uh, Paul and and Lori and all of your staff for the amazing work that um, you do at the golf course that. The standards are um, just. The top of the top and and that's due to you and your staff and your dedication. So thank you. It really is a gem in Miami Springs and for the whole Miami Dade County.
Uh, Mayor, if I might, uh, tell trust Mr. Rossen, um, Tep, there was, uh, we were supposed to do this last year. Except with all the backup of the ships and everything that was going on at the time with the. Supply chain business and everything, a lot of the pieces, I I was told, were part and parcel to that. You know, uh, not moving the materials. And so we had to put it off because of that. We were supposed to do this last year. Money's been sitting there. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move to the next agenda item and we have um. Councilman Fahad, were you on here? I must be looking at an older.
Yeah.
Okay, let me look at yours to see where you're at. Okay, um, so we have a a. Discussion by Councilman Walter Fahad.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I just wanted to take a moment, uh, we're. To respond. To the. That were. About. The general. Chewing parking fee and continues to come up and because it it gets dusted off. It's not really an, it's an open forum, but it's not really a discussion of a segment of the agenda. And. Which was addressed because it's kind of open questions about. To respond. So. Steven. On twenty six. Discussion. Discussion. Parking fee, but at the twenty six minute mark, uh, I mean. Even official ones that occurred. So just continue to encourage. It just doesn't make sense to keep a single detail and just we like to have contemporary records and what happened. Stock of cinema illustration. To to search them. City staff. Some type of conspiracy or corruption or something that so.
Thank you, Councilman, for addressing that and for clarifying that. Um, okay, so now we go to um, the next agenda item, which is an announcement by our beloved city manager, William Alonso.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to read into the record the uh, a letter that I posted uh. On uh, our social media sites this week. And it starts off to the citizens of Miami Springs. This past February tenth, twenty twenty three, I turned seventy years old. While I have thoroughly enjoyed serving the city of Miami Springs all these years, my plans have always been to retire upon reaching this milestone. I want to use my many years. Which no one knows how many we have, spending quality time with my family and grandchildren. With that goal in mind, after seven years of as your city manager, I will officially retire from the city on May thirty first, twenty twenty three. I will work with city council over the next several months to create a smooth transition. I want to thank all of the city councils which wish, with which I have worked for their confidence in me. As well as a sense of kindness you have shown me over the years while I have run this great community. When I became city manager in twenty sixteen, our military rate was seven point five oh. And reserves were three point two million. Today, with the support of the city council, we have a military rate of six point nine one. And we ended last fiscal year with over seven point five million in reserves. Additionally, when I became finance director in two two thousand and four. The city had ended the prior year with a military rate of eight point seven four four and a deficit in reserves of three hundred thousand dollars. I am extremely satisfied with my accomplishments to leave the city in an excellent financial condition in order to meet the challenges of the future. During my tenure, not only did we decrease our tax rate and replenish our reserves. But we have accomplished a great deal under my directive as finance director of city management. I would like to share some of the major accomplishments. We completed the restoration of the Curtis Mansion. We executed a historic tax credit to fund the mansion improvements. We obtained an FDOT grant to partially fund a new parking lot at the mansion. We added lighting lighting to the Curtis Mansion parking lot. We built a new community center. We built a new aquatic center. We built a new adult community center, including a new top lot playground. We built a boat room, taking hut at North Oak, Louisiana Boulevard. Installed taking huts along Ludham Road, installed the new welcome sign at the city entrance. We did the Westwood Lake, uh, Westwood Drive pedestrian bike path. We finally had installed the Eastern Ford Memorial. We installed the Cavalier clock at the circle. We did improvements to Prince Field drainage and field. We installed sidewalk ADA retrofits throughout the city. We have a citywide sidewalk project to install sidewalks in needed areas, and this is an ongoing project. We did the FPL pilot underground running program, which is still ongoing. Couple of things I forgot to mention because I couldn't, I thought about them afterwards. We provided a new home for the historic museum at Stafford Park. We paid off our golf course loan a few years ago so that we could. Hire our food and beverage contractor to take over. And the biggest thing, one of the biggest things, well, we sold the water and sewer operation to the county. Saving the residents a lot of money. Um, in future repairs that we were back then, we were looking at twenty to thirty million dollars in sewer repairs, huh? We're currently in the process of over fifteen point five million dollars in project citywide with no sort of funding coming from state appropriations. Special thank you to Senator Brian Avila, former Senator Manny Diaz, and current representative Alec Rizzo. For helping us obtain this funding and for all the past and future support to the city. Right now, we're we're starting the South Fork, Louisiana median project, which is going to start in March. We have the Oakwood East Drive Stormwater Road Improvement Project. We have the South Drive Stormwater Road Improvement Project. New uh, Hope Square Pump Station. Golf course renovation for the first time since purchasing the golf course in nineteen ninety seven. The golf course had we has reported an operating profit for the last two fiscal years in a row. We're in the process of extending payers on the trail and the first block of Curtis Parkway on both sides. And we're currently undergoing a vulnerability and facility assessment through a grant that we received from the state. On the public safety side. For the first time in decades, the number of police officers was increased from thirty three to forty seven. We provided police with the tools needed to keep our city safe, such as red light cameras, license plate readers, new technology, shield equipment, and much more. The runway motel on office thirty sixth street was forced to close as a public nuisance due to the criminal activity and life safety concern. The city established the nuisance abatement board in order to establish a process where problem businesses could be shut down. And we increased our co compliance officers to three full time officers. We also um, uh, got the airport diner property demolished and we're in the process of working. On an agreement with them so that the property is eventually served and developed. Now, as far as natural disasters. The part that. Emmy helped me a lot was with FEMA. During my tenure, we went through hurricanes Roma, Francis, Catuna, and Irma. And we also had the twenty seventeen tornado. Roads were open and debris cleared quickly after each storm. Miami District was also able to get FEMA reimbursement for all the costs on all of these hurricanes. Now comes the COVID pandemic. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, our city was at the forefront of providing us residents with vaccines and COVID testing. Early on, we contacted contracted with Jackson Memorial to schedule vaccine shots. In April of twenty twenty one, we arranged for our community center to serve as a FEMA vaccination site. Over five thousand vaccinations were administered in one week. Following that, we opened a COVID testing site in the parking lot of the of the community center. And the Florida Department of Health Vaccination Site at the Aquatics Center, which still operates today. We have broad time been able to provide the resources to our residents. The city held numerous food drives during the pandemic in order to ensure needy residents had food on their table. In addition, we also had a program to help those affected by COVID. Which provided hundreds of residents with a two hundred and fifty dollar grocery gift card. On social media, we established a strong presence in social media, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. To keep residents informed and provide a direct access to the city. We established a weekly newsletter. We just uh, initiated the See Click Fix app. To uh, allow residents to communicate problems with the city. And we also established the Everbridge Emergency Communication System to other residents during natural disasters and other emergencies. Downtown development. Mayor and prior council have made it a priority to revitalize and increase business activity in the downtown area. Especially at the old theater property that has sat vacant in a nice short for decades. Through the establishment of the Gateway Overland District, the city saw an investment of approximately twenty five to thirty million dollars on the theater property, which will be completed soon. We are now also seeing renovations, improvements in three other properties in the heart of our downtown, including the old Adventist property on the circle. The Family Bar's Community's property and the Washington Gym property on Hope Square. These improved building. Buildings will bring new businesses amenities to our downtown alone with the hope of additional overall activity to the area. Solutions to reinvigorate our downtown have been discussed from signage and events to even a possible parking garage. New business activity activity means growth for our business and more business amenities for our residents. We are working to grow with our business. We are currently in the process of continuing a parking study. In the downtown area, which will provide council recommendations on what will be needed to meet current and future parking demands. North First Thirty Sixth Street has also seen some activity. We're also proud that the Miami Association for Realtors is building their world headquarters already in our city. There are also some great projects that the in the pipeline for North First Thirty Sixth Street that will be great additions to that corridor. An annexation, annexation started twenty years ago when I was fifty years old. We we came very close a few months ago, but unfortunately, our annexation and our local agreement was not approved by the county commission. We are still fighting for it, and the next two months will be critical for our cause. Regardless of what happens with our current application, I strongly feel that this area will be annexed to our city at some point in the future. Finally, I'd like to thank some of the people that have helped me succeed during all my years with the city. Former city manager Jim Borland for selecting me as finance director in two thousand and four. Former city manager Ron Willing for naming me assistant city manager finance director in two thousand and eleven. And being a mentor and providing me valuable valuable insight. Mayor Xavier Xavier Garcia, Councilman Best, Councilman Bean, as well as Councilwoman Buckner. For appointing me city manager in twenty sixteen. Mayor Marina Mitchell and former mayors Billy Bean and Xavier Garcia for their support during their terms of office. And all the great council members I have had the pleasure to serve over the last eighteen years. And at that, I'd like to recognize three of them that are not with us anymore, which is Jim Carter. Paul Dotson and Jennifer Hattor. Like to thank city attorneys Jan Steen, Dennis Spino, and Heidi Sarah. Like to thank city attorneys Jan Steeden, Dennis Spino, and Heidi Sarah for their invaluable legal advice. A special thank you, thank you to our former district six commissioner Rebecca Sosa. A special thank you to former district six commissioner Rebecca Sosa for all of her support to our city during the years, among which included funding the mansion restoration, the community center, and the adult community center. All of my current and former department heads, some of them are here today, and I thank you and city staff for the excellent level of services they provide to our residents on a daily basis. And finally, I'd like to thank my assistant city manager, Tammy Romero, who has been a great asset to me and to the city. And I will forever be thankful for his service and dedication. I will always have finally, I will always have a special place in my heart for the city and its residents. And only wish all of you the very best going forward. Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I might, I don't know how quite to respond to that, but I will tell you this. I think there have been few, if any, public officials in Dade County. They can recite a record like that for the amount of time that we've spent here. That is absolutely unguanting what he's done. Um, he is going to be tremendously missed in this town. This I can tell you. Um, and there's one thing I can add to this. I'm a new incoming council. And we had like eight hundred, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in our reserves or something back in two thousand four, two thousand. Ridiculous. I mean, we were, we were about out of business. Tallahassee was about to move in. And look where we are now. Absolutely incredible. Absolutely incredible. It has been my absolute pleasure to have served with you throughout your entire duration. I thank you so much for that, and I value our friendship.
I don't even, I, it's too much. I do want to say from the very beginning, and it's, it's way, I feel like Councilman Best, I don't know where to start with this, but uh, one of the things that I can say very easily is that, um, as impressive as the list of accomplishments are that you listed, that's the tip of the iceberg. I know that, and every councilman, councilperson here who has served with you knows that. Um, there's so many other, um, accomplishments that, um, our city manager, William Alonso, accomplishes every single week, and I can't even tell you, um, his position is the most important, valuable, trusted, um, position in the entire city. It's by far the one that has the most responsibility, the most headaches, the most decision making. And he's always, um, in the years that I've been sitting on this council for six years now, and I can tell you, um, the one word that I would use, um, uh, well, two words I'd have to say, um, that stand out if somebody were to ask me is integrity and a gentleman. And he is definitely both of those, um. His knowledge, and I have worked with the county and the state, um, for over thirty years. I have been with a lot of administrators in the public sector, the county level and at the state level. And I can tell you, I have never come across anyone. I have never had the privilege of working with anyone who is more knowledgeable, responsible, accessible. Um, I always say he has his finger on the pulse of every single thing that is going on in the county. And remember, all of the departments, I mean, in the county, in the city, all of the departments in the city report to him. He's their boss. They have to report to him. He's responsible for that. In addition, he's responsible for handling the whole council and our personalities and, you know, and the residents. So it's, um, from all areas, um, and he's always manages to do this with, um, a demeanor that is, um, um, he listens, um, he comes up with solutions, he has the history, um, but he respects everyone. He respects his, uh, city employees. Um, I, in the whole time I've been on the council, I've never heard a complaint from a city employee about our city manager. I think that's pretty unusual. Um, he respects our, our city employees. He provides a, a desirable, pleasant, healthy workplace, productive, extremely productive. He respects our residents. Every single resident can reach him at any time. Any weekends, anything, he's, he's always available and he'll listen to them. He'll try to resolve their issues. Um, I get copied on a lot of emails or I send a lot of emails to him that I get from residents, and he responds immediately and we try to resolve it, um, and with the council, with all of us. He's so accessible to us. He's also, um, an ambassador for our city all these years with other cities and at the state level and at the county level and at the federal level. And, um, these are extremely big, big shoes to fill. Um, I, I think, um, graciously, he has been doing the job of the finance director, um, for the city to save the city money. Um, that's not unusual in, in cities, in smaller cities, um, very often, you know, the city manager will have another position. They'll be the director. I know South Miami, the Public Works Director was the city manager. Another city down here, the, um, Human Resources Director is the city manager, but they get paid for that. They get paid for two. It hasn't been happening here at the city. He's been doing the job of this finance director for the city because he could and he was willing to, and, um, we're going to have sticker shock. The, our residents, we're going to get sticker shock when we try to replace a, we're going to have to replace, not replace, we're going to have to hire a department head as finance director and then replace our city manager. Um, but even if with sticker shock, if you could say we'll be able to find someone of his caliber, um, you know, that would be wonderful. Um, I'm just not sure we'll be able to do that, um, but for all of the work that he's been doing twenty-four seven, I know I reach him twenty-four seven and we have long discussions and, you know, texting and phone calls and emails back and forth, um, and I'm sure the rest of the council too. Um, and in employees and everything for all he's been doing, he, um, very, very, very much deserves um, retirement and enjoying his retirement with his lovely family and his grandchildren. So even though I did try to get him to stay longer.
Wait, waiting for that.
Yes, um, there was no way I could, he said, no, he goes, that was my milestone birthday and I've always, you know, had my eye on that. So, um, hopefully, maybe we can, um, still count on your expertise. Um, I'm trying to talk him into consultant or something else along the way. But, um, we have really big shoes to fill, but William, um, I, I speak on behalf of, I think, all of our residents, um, for sure, um, and I know the employees, and I'll let the council speak for themselves, um, we thank you. You've put in your heart, your soul, your expertise, your professional, um, your dedication. It's, it's not just the work that you've done. It's you've been, you've really, really done the best that you could for our city, and you've done that gladly. So, um, for that, we greatly thank you. We're very appreciative. And I think, um, the results speak for themselves. If you look around Miami Springs, it's never looked better. The downtown is gleaming. Uh, we have so many, and you spoke of the accomplishments and, and you know, they speak for themselves. Anywhere you go in the city, it really looks better. And that's because of the number of years that this man has been our city manager. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've also been up here for a while, and you've always made this job easy. Um, we started this meeting. Wow, I'm getting emotional. It's like, yeah, and I'm not leaving. Um, we started with our, um, with our, with a statement of how our accounting has been done. Um, ever since he's been our accountant, um, we've won awards every year for his job. And that's something he didn't mention. And that's something this city should be very proud of. Yeah, thank you.
Good point, George.
Thank you. I don't want to get emotional. We, we still got to number thirty-first, right? Like, I think I'm at a little matter hook. Um, I, I think that uh, as a matter of experience, there's work to be done. We're going to talk about, uh, how succession will and, and to who, and, uh, that writing that he's helping us with the process of finding a finance director, which I think is a huge first step, and I can think of nobody more gratified to, to help in that search, uh, than uh, because he's outstanding in that respect, uh, as Councilman Love will say. Uh, but, uh, just all the, all the flowers that you're getting, uh, you can get more at the end, uh, uh, but, but thank you for bringing me here, uh, for waiting and, and give for your service and still a few months until, until we let you go. So, thank you.
Councilwoman, did you want to say anything?
Not today. He knows why.
Yes.
All right.
All right, William.
Other than, other than, thank you for tolerating my persistency, my, my, I mean, he could be my dad. So I think we've had a lot of hurdles and then we just get over it because it's just, it's an interesting din- dynamic that we've created and I'm going to miss it. So that's it just for today.
Okay, with that said, we'll move to the next, um, uh, agenda item and it's, um, discussion on our city manager's retirement and the selection process for hiring a new city manager. And, um, just to be clear, we're, um, right now, we have the position open for finance director, right? So we are in the process of, uh, trying to hire a finance director, and that would be hired by the city manager. Okay. Heidi, did you want to explain the process for?
So I think, um, myself, uh, your Human Resources Director, Bill Collins, and our city manager, our very esteemed outgoing city manager, uh, I'll have things to add this evening. I wanted to set sort of the, the stage for, from a, from a legal perspective, what you, what your restrictions are. And really, it's just that you as the council are the ones that select your city manager. It is your decision and your decision only. Um, there is nothing in your charter that requires you or your code that requires you to conduct a search or appoint a manager in a certain way. There's nothing that sets forth what requirements the city manager needs to hold. Um, so those are the process, how you select the city manager is entirely within your discretion, as well as what qualifications you choose, uh, to, to set forth as part of that process. Um, this is really your decision to make. Um, in your materials, you have a memo from me giving you some guidance as far as the charter and code, but just summed it up for you, if you want the Cliff Notes version. Um, I also provided a very preliminary timeline that of what a search, if you choose to do a search, uh, what that could look like. Over the course of the last week and a half, uh, working, uh, Mr. Collins has taken on the effort of obtaining a lot of data that I think you have printed in front of you. Um, about firms that can conduct a search if you choose to go outside and, and have a firm. Some cities hire an outside consulting firm to conduct a professional search of this kind. So Bill has gone ahead and obtained proposals from four different firms. Um, the proposals, he's also done a summary, which is at the top of your, that packet. Um, don't, don't be scared by the, the size of those packets. It's proposals from four different firms and Bill the, the, uh, proposals and the dollars incentive it comes out to, you're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars to conduct a search using an outside firm. Um, and I'll let Bill speak to the pros and cons of, of using a firm versus going through an in-house search. Um, Bill has also done some data analysis on median and average salaries for city managers as well as finance directors so that you have that in your materials. Um, what else am I missing? So I think as far as tonight, uh, one thing I, I failed to mention. So in my memo, I, I tried to give you a somewhat aggressive timeline of what a city, city manager recruitment process might look like. And I also included, um, thank you, Bill, for providing this, a, um, a qualifications or, or the, the ad that was used brought in twenty eleven for one of the city manager searches, as you'll recall, when manager Alonso was, was selected, he, there was not a search. He was appointed. He was the assistant city manager at that time, and he was appointed a city manager. There was not a search that was conducted. So prior to that, the search was in twenty eleven. And the qualifications and description that were used then are in the memo that you have in your agenda packet on my memo. Um, the timeline that I gave you is a very aggressive timeline. Uh, what you'll see from the proposals from the four different firms, from the consulting firms, and I think Bill would agree with the timeline overall, is that this is a search process, if you do a search process, assuming you do that, you are looking at a twelve to sixteen week process. Um, so it is a lengthy timeframe to, to go through. Um, but it's a very important job and shoes to fill.
Up through the chair, uh, Heidi, that will in effect surpass Williams' tenure here.
Yes.
Is that good for the city or not?
I, I really can't speak to that, uh, Councilman Best. I think that you should be aware that you are well within your discretion to appoint an interim city manager. I think, uh, historically, the assistant city manager has taken on that role. Um, I did some research and looked through, uh, many records that our city clerk's office has. And you have several, several, you have a very long history of appointing your ACM as your interim city council, as your interim city manager, and oftentimes as your ultimate city manager.
Mayor, I, I would be of the opinion that if the current assistant city manager oh, wanted to throw her hat into the ring to be, I, I think that in the event that we appoint an interim, it shouldn't be somebody who is, it should be another administrator within city staff that, and that, my understanding is that that's not, uh, that's not uncommon, that an interim can be any other director within the staff. I, I don't think that we should appoint an interim for somebody who is trying to be, uh, uh, who's applying to be the next city manager is what I'm saying.
I would, um, I disagree. I think that the interim city, that, um, an interim city manager is the best person to serve as a city manager. Um, that doesn't mean at all that they can't throw their hat to the ring for doing a search. Obviously, they'll apply for that position. They have the ability to apply for it, but, um, first of all, to, they're, they're the one that is the most knowledgeable as to what the city manager has to do, and to throw that responsibility on another department director. Um, when they have their departments to run, I, I don't see what the purpose would be. It by no means means that, um, that the city, that the assistant city manager, um, as interim can't apply for the position. But I, I wouldn't see any reason to, to give it, to, to throw it to another department director and, and ask them to do a job that, um,
There's also firms that, that offer mayor, uh, like interim city managers. Is that right, Heidi? They're
I haven't seen interim city manager. I've seen interim finance director.
Finance directors. All right. It just, it just seems that if we go, if we get far along into the process and you're down to two or three candidates and we're past the May thirty-first, if one of them is serving as the interim city manager, I, I feel like that kind of makes the, you know, the culmination of, of that search kind of, I think it kind of compromises it a little bit.
I think historically and, and Councilman, um, Loeb and, and Councilman Best, you can probably speak to this, but it is what the city has done in the past, right? And, and even my understanding, and I wasn't on the council then, but another city manager was hired while the assistant city manager was serving as interim city manager.
If I might.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I think this city has had a history of hiring, um, outside people and ending up only to hire somebody that was sitting in, in Tammy's position. Um, I, I will tell you, um, I, 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 I'm not against, uh, going outside and, and finding others. But I will tell you that for the most part, But I will tell you that for the most part. Um, I I will lean towards Tammy simply because she has. She has the background for the city. She knows everything about the city and um. I think this city has always benefited from somebody that has sat in that position. Um, Councilman Best can 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 either confirm or deny what I'm saying, but I think that that um.
But I think that that I think.
Yes.
This should be all is.
You in in his.
The interim.
And interim is always is.
Because.
Been sit has.
From what Heidi explained, the the likelihood may be that by the time. William retires and he's on his cruise, so he made sure he's scheduling a cruise, so he's not available to extend it, right?
Yes, the the assistant city manager has has always.
Can be.
Yes.
That.
Has taken the.
And it and it's the same job that our interim city manager has performed when our city manager's on vacation. So it's really, I mean.
Fill in.
That that position. Yes, sir.
The chair, um, I I I first off uh ki- kind of appreciate George uh bringing up. The the couple of points that he just did, but also to to uh Councilman Fahad's point. Um, I I I know where he's going with that. He's looking for 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 like a fair transition in terms of all the players. And if somebody's already in the position, that gives them an advantage, a decided advantage over anybody else that might be considered. I understand that. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I totally understand it as a logical position. Um, yes, the city has over the years uh put a an assistant manager when we've had one. Ron Gorland, since I've been up here, has been the only assistant city manager, or the first one anyway, and that was with Jim Borgman. Frank Spence, it was, it went right to Jim Borgman and then Jim brought Ron in. And then when Ron became manager, he moved, he brought William, William was brought in by Jim, but then Ron. Kept him and brought him in or suggested him for, once he left to come become city manager. So there's a, there's a period, there was an interim period there as well. Um, and and there was Maria Davis, thank you, William. Was after Frank Spence, that's right, but she, she she wasn't here, she wasn't around very long.
No, that's that's when they appointed uh an interim.
At the interim, yeah, so that that anyway, that whole pit, that whole period there pretty much demonstrates what you said. We've had a history of doing that. Um, and by and large, pretty successfully, by the way, um, so to to to. I I've never been a big fan of consultants. I will tell you this, I have always been a big fan of trying to hire within. Where appropriate, uh forty one years in aviation, uh twenty eight of that was in management. There's a lot of guys and gals coming and going during that period of time, and I always made it a point to try and look hard, real hard. At people that were in positions that could assimilate to the job. If they weren't ready yet, they could be made ready. Um, you could delay the the resignation or the or the retirement or whatever to make that happen. And it's always by and large been pretty successful. That's just been my experience. That means nothing. Um, but it's, it is my perspective, my per- my perception of it. Uh, again, not in a public administration setting, that was in aviation, aviation management setting. But really, there's no difference when it comes to a maintenance organization or a a a management organization. Management is management, management one-on-one. Um, the accounting element is very critical. I agree with William, um, and that is his expertise by and large, accounting. Um, and finance, uh that we that we first, our first step needs to be to to get that. That taken care of, that satisfied. I think that the CFO is is very important to this town. I don't believe we're gonna get real lucky and find a guy like William that can do both. I don't think that's gonna happen. We should give up on that right out of the gate. Uh, but uh the CFO thing, I think would be the principle that we ought to go after first and 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 then proceed from there. Look, and we've got, Bill, you just loaded us up here. We got, we got, what's that, an inch and a half of reading? Uh, and as and that's doesn't include Haiti's version or his or or input. Um, so I think tonight, Mayor, I would, I would suggest that um that we uh. Kind of, we put it out there, we know what's happening, William has stated his his circumstances. Um, I think we got a lot of reading to do, a lot of thinking to do, and we come back on the fourteenth and 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 we we really start getting in into the into this thing.
Well.
I don't know that we can provide directions tonight.
I'd like, I'd like to ask you what that, what is the? I hate to put you on the spot, Heidi, but like what what's the likelihood that we couldn't finish this search? Uh, by May thirty first, I mean, is it unlikely that we're gonna be done? I mean, you know, the other thing is there's new, there could potentially be. A drastically new council coming in. Uh, I I always try to be mindful of of that, that they're gonna be coming in, uh so. Is it, is it very likely that we're gonna not make it by May thirty first and may need a month or two, like what are we? Time, I mean, I get, I get what you're saying, Councilman Best, that like, you know, obviously, there's the potential, but it doesn't seem, but I I feel like just the optics of it. I feel like if anything, if we've learned anything from, you know, the current climate and how how we're being scrutinized. I feel like if we're gonna open it up, we should be beyond reproach, and if we need a month, right, or two, or whatever we 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 think is likely. Of an interim, I don't think that it's the best optics to have somebody who who may potentially be in the last couple of candidates. Uh, to to be serving as the interim when that decision is made, uh but that's just my opinion, I'm just one. One voice, but I I do it just more so that things are kind of beyond reproach, but how, so that's long-winded question. Well, how likely is it that we can't get this done by May thirty first?
So I think from what we're seeing from all of the consultants and I think even Bill, if if the. If the process were conducted in-house, would I think, I I don't want to speak for you, but I think you would agree that the process would likely take. That amount of time extending beyond William's uh May thirty first date. Um, you know, there's a proposal here and all of the, all of the consultants have said. Obviously, they would work within the timeline that the city imposes, but in their professional opinions, it's a twelve to sixteen week process. Uh, there's one here sort of in the middle of your packet that has a process going through June twenty third with. Council council interviews and the decision being made in June. Um, and then post-selection having the employment agreement, so you're not actually hiring someone until July.
Through the chair.
I'm not so concerned about how long it's gonna take us to find a city manager. I mean, we're gonna find one, right? And I, you know, I I agree completely with. Councilman uh Fahad, um, I respect Tammy dearly. I'm very, when it comes to these processes, I'm very traditional. And the aspect of, I want to know what my options are. Again, I'm not saying that Tammy cannot perform the job, but I am saying that. We've done this time and time again where we have recruited from within, which is fine. But because it is, like you say, such an important decision and the these positions, you can't just, I mean. They'll just roll on from votes of confidence, right? And it's harder, it's harder. So we're right now in a golden opportunity to really look at all of our options. Okay, um. We've already done, you know, we went, again, not to use your example, Heidi, but. We we assumed Wysero, we've assumed a a couple of different various roles. I just, I would feel comfortable to open it up. And to s- see what our options are, and if she's gonna serve as as interim or not, or somebody else. At the end of the day, I keep hearing, oh, because this person knows what's going on in the city. Well, you know, we have to teach someone at one point, someone new has to start at one point. You understand? So I think it's very unfair, although it might seem like the logical move. But again, I'm here serving my residents and I'm serving my city, and as much as I like Tammy, and as much as I like a lot of you. I have to take a step back and say, um. I I just have to open it up and and give us that opportunity and if sh- it should just be fair. Um, that's where I stand on it, and it's the same thing as what Walter was saying, that it gives someone an advantage. And I think Maria, when we were talking about council, we wanted to make sure that the person that was gonna serve as interim was not gonna be. Running for council. I think it's kind of like the same concept.
I'll tell you why it's not, Councilwoman, and I'll tell you why it's not, because when you're running for council, it's an election. And you are telling the residents what you're going to do in that position. What you're, and they're gonna vote for you based on the promises that you make, the changes that you want to make and all this. It's a very different position, city manager. The city manager, what the residents need is to make sure that their services continue. That their garbage is picked up, that the staff is being paid, that the sta- that the departments are being run. Um, this isn't a popularity contest. It's making sure the city manager runs the city. So it's two apples and oranges to me. Um, and the reason that, and I understand what Councilman Fahad was saying of, you know, giving it to someone else. But I don't think that that's in the best interest of our residents and our city, because our department directors have their departments to run. And what our residents want is for their departments to run smoothly regardless of this transition. And really, the easiest thing would just be for William not to retire, but you know, we'll go on. Um.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, but let me just, so I I think that having the interim. All it does is, it's a job she's already doing. It's not, it's not putting her in a position of who's gonna vote for her because she's an incumbent. It's a job she's already doing and we know that the the in uh assistant city manager performs in, you know, has performed. As the city manager's interim when he's been on vacation. So I, but I do think that um. What we're talking about here is, um, I know I'm in favor of opening it up. Of, but I think there's two um ways that we're opening up and that's what Heidi's saying.
Right.
One is, do we open it up, just advertise a position ourselves like we are doing with the finance director? That we advertise it and and Bill can tell us how it's being advertised, or do we go to a a search company? That actually goes outside and and looks for um someone that's a qualified candidate. To come and apply, reaches out to them and says, you know, we've got, you know, a a what do you call it, recruiting company? And reaches because these are difficult positions to fill. Um, there's a cost involved, the cost is gonna be twenty five to thirty five thousand. That's a lot of money. However, I don't think it's that much money if we get the right person for the position, because we're talking about a position that is the most important position. As much as, you know, we'd like to sa- say we are, they're the ones running the city for our residents. You know, they're the ones that make sure that, you know, everything our residents need every single day is is happening and will happen in the future. So, in that sense, you know, I I think the decision is, if I'm hearing the council correctly, is not. Are we gonna open it up? It's, do we, how do we advertise it immediately, just us, or do we go through the search?
Um, so I have a question for Bill, uh Mayor, so. Based on these these notes of of the arguments in favor of using an executive search, this was put together by you or this was given to us by the?
No, that's, no, that's something I just came up with this afternoon. I go, um, it just, my professional opinion is that if you. Are going to conduct an external search for the uh for a uh city manager, you should do it properly. With a professional executive search and uh and I spelled out the reasons.
Right, and I I agree wholeheartedly with that, but in the same spirit of of, you know, trying to to. To outwardly appear beyond reproach and that we're doing everything as fairly and as transparently as possible, I feel like. I'm looking at the prices, the highest is thirty four thousand, but twenty four and a half, twenty three and a half, twenty, almost twenty four. I feel like that is a small price to pay, not to burden our current human resources department. I think that it's gonna be an external uh third party who is performing the search. Um, uh, I've lived in this town a long time and I know a lot of people and I know a lot of city staff and I know that that. Uh, that many, many people feel like Tammy is very qualified and I feel like she's already at an advantage. I've already stated kind of my point of view of what I think in the event that we have to have an interim, but if the fastest way to get this done. And the most transparent and kind of independent, and you just said, do it the right way, I, that coming from Bill. I feel like that's, this is, I don't feel like twenty four thousand dollars is a lot of money to pay to be able to say, hey, we did an independent search and then we pick. Because we feel like they're the best fit for our city, uh I don't feel like that uh could come into question. So I'm definitely in favor of of an outside search firm that can work uh full-time on finishing a project like this. Because they want their money and they want to get the project done, rather than putting that burden on uh on the human resources.
There's one other thing um through the chair, I might add, um, and it was mentioned earlier and one of one of you, uh, one of my colleagues brought it up. And it had to do with the election of April fourth. At least two of us are gonna be gone on April fourth. Uh, so, uh, that's gonna introduce almost half of a new council that's gonna have to engage this process. Today is February twenty seventh. April fourth is a long, is kind of a long way, it really isn't, but it's kind of a long way off in terms of. Time expended toward in, you know, toward this process, toward the fulfillment of this process. Um, so I think that's critical here too. Um, cause you're gonna have at least two people up here after April fourth that are gonna know nothing about this process of. You know, they might know that, yeah, we're looking for a manager, but they're gonna have to study and catch up on all this stuff, and that's gonna take time. So that's gonna even add to, you know, even longer. So, I would keep that in mind.
So, I am not sure, Councilman Best, are you saying that you are for the recruiting process or just for us advertising? No, what do you call it, advertising?
Yeah.
Two, one is recruitment, the one, how do you refer to the two?
I mean, the councilman said he tends to be anti consultancy, but do you feel like in this case?
I I I did say that, but I uh consulting for right reasons and consulting within a timeframe for the right money.
Okay.
And twenty four thousand is not a lot of money for 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 this type of an activity, so I'm not opposed to that. But I'm suggesting if we are going to go that route, we do it pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think that's the one of the benefits.
Exactly what I'm saying.
So, what would you call the two different? One is recruitment.
Recruitment, you you know.
Professional recruitment?
Yeah, but it would be, um, you know, there's a versus like a selection, so, you know, sometimes the interview process, that's considered to be selection. Recruitment is uh this whole executive search, they'll do it.
Executive search.
Yeah, yeah, so they'll do it from uh, you know, soup to nuts. They'll do the whole thing from from the very beginning. They'll start by asking you questions to get your, you know, what you're looking for in a candidate. And uh, it it, when you read those proposals, you'll see this is the way they all do it, they all do it the same way. By the way, all, and I think they all know each other, all of these consultants, so these are the four main ones.
Between these, there's three companies here? Like, how would we, or how would we decide, do we have to go through a a committee for that to decide that or?
So, you've got, you've got four proposals in front of you and I know that you have, you're just getting them now for the first time. We. Uh, I know Bill was working very hard to get these very quickly.
Their arms saying, like to be considered.
Yes, so, so Bill did a nice job of of putting what the maximum potential cost could be in in this. Um, chart that you have in front of you, it summarizes the four firms. Um. I've seen two of these firms in other cities locally. Um, you could give us direction to. Negotiate an agreement with perhaps the lowest priced firm, which in this case is Mercer Group. And we could do a professional services agreement, um, so that we don't waste time. If you wanted to put this on your agenda for your next council meeting. And so have the opportunity to go through these proposals and perhaps if if you wanted to um speak with any of the consultants yourselves. You could do that. Um.
Through the chair and with all due respect, um, I think this is critical enough, Mayor, that I'm gonna recommend that we do a special meeting on this ASAP. Just this item.
That was going to be my next option.
I know.
Well, Bill, let me ask you, of these four companies, are you familiar with anyone in particular that you're, you know, is is? Works well or does it?
You know, I would say that all four of these have a solid reputation and uh, you know, that all of them would be. Would be qualified to to perform this. There are some qualitative dish- differences though, and so, you know, you'd. Really, I think the differences would probably be in your, you know, the job, the references that they have. Uh, you probably know other. Other uh elected officials who've hired them and have had experiences with them, so.
Let me ask you, if the um, if someone already knows about the position and is interested in applying. Um, how do they have to go through this firm to be, how does that work? Like, say here in the community, you know, in in South Florida, somebody hears about the position and is interested in applying, how does that work?
So if you were to go on right now on to uh, like for instance, uh Florida League of Cities has a few of these uh posted there. And what you would do is typically you would, you know, sometimes they have them sent directly like they um. It looks like it would might be a City of Miami Springs ad, but the your, the email address is send your, your resume and your. Cover letter and maybe references, send them to this uh email address. That email address sometimes is collected by the city clerk. Um, I haven't seen HR involved as much as uh probably the city clerk in terms of working with the consultants. And then uh, uh, then it's forwarded to the consultant or it's 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 to the consultant. One of the um, as you read these proposals, you'll see that, um, you know, sometimes they deal informally with folks and uh they're bound by. You know, they are bound by our public records law and things like this as a, as we've outsourced it, but if they've got, they might have candidates that they reach out to and so forth. So that 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 can happen too.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, do all four of these have have a history?
Do all four of these have have a history of city, of hiring city?
Yes, all 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 four of those do. And I just heard today of one other one, that if you're interested, there might be another one that we could find, but these four all all have a very good reputation. And they have been very successful and they continue to do, you know, plenty of work in Florida.
So as our human resources director, what I'm hearing is that you recommend that we use a search or you feel that this is something that the city can advertise on?
I would say use, use a search, do it that way. I know, I I know somebody who's doing in-house project that I spoke with today and she told me that, for instance, she has a hundred and ten resumes and cover letters from people who are totally unqualified. Now you have to read every, every one, you have to, you have to go through that process. This is something that the, that the search firm does. You know, we, you know, we don't have to get involved and they'll filter it and they'll meet exactly what it is you're looking for. And in a neutral and biased way. So, you know, I would, I would definitely, you know, you know, ask that you please consider that. If it's done in house, I'll do whatever the, you know, the the council wants me to do. But, you know, I, I want to see it done properly, even and I've seen mistakes that have been made and and, you know, and I don't want, I know some of those pitfalls, but I I'm not sure I know every one of them. You know, I've never worked in an executive search firm. I've worked in, you know, in government agencies and recruitment. But typically, the these are specialties, these are things that, you know, people have really honed their skills on and can do them very efficiently.
One other thing, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one thing for all of us to keep in mind is we, we're going to have to let them know how many, how many resumes we want to see to consider. Was it three, five, whatever it is? And and at that point, we would, we would choose, I would think, instead of having them choose. Because we need to see, we need to be the, the, the people that, that make that final decision. And that's, that's something that everybody here should, should think about. You want to see five, you want to see three, how many do you want to see? And I I remember in the last search that we went through, we, we ended up with like seven. At the end, that would not many, we didn't get many qualified applicants. It was total of seven. So that's something to.
Seven that you wanted to see or seven?
Seven that we ended up, they were qualified, that that they were fully qualified in the end. So I it it's, it may not be a, a, a long search either, considering what we went through before, so.
Point.
Yes, yes. Councilman, where are you going to say?
No, I just said, good point, George.
Okay, so I guess there's two, well, let's see. Am I hearing from everyone that consensus is that we will do a search? That we'll go ahead. I mean, we do, we might as well move along with this, you know, there's no real reason to. It's, these are pretty easy decisions and this, I mean, it'll be difficult to hiring someone, but I mean, these decisions for, so we'll do an executive search. I think that that, you know, is in the best interest of the community. We have an excellent assistant city manager right now, but I think we owe it to the community to, to do a search and I guess how we pick the the four is the next thing. I I'm not sure what's the, I mean, I I agree with what Councilman Fihad said, you know, this amount of money, even though it's a large sum of money, is well worth it to to make sure that, you know, whoever we place in that position is the best candidate for that position, best qualified to serve our residents, our community. You know, we will come and go, but what the what the community really needs is is someone that, you know, that provides that consistency and that expertise and that knowledge.
Can I ask a question? Heidi, can they, can they give us an approval amount of not to exceed, let's say twenty five thousand? And let staff decide which one of the companies we think is better to go with, because they're all pretty, pretty close.
I I think, so oftentimes in your procurements, you normally go with your lowest, most responsible bidder, right? So in this case, if we're looking at, and you know, I I haven't looked at the backup, but if we're looking at the numbers that are presented here, the lowest.
But that might not be, that might not be fully accurate. The expenses, so they have typically, they have a fee and then they have expenses. And so, you know, it's the expenses that are, that are, they're itemized, they have to, you know, they produce receipts and so forth. I'm not sure how much, how much they've actually spent, like we can go back and find out from other.
The last line, you have the maximal.
Right, that's the maximum potential, but I'm not sure, for instance, that the the one that has an eight thou, you know, it has eight thousand as expenses. I'm not sure that he's ever charged anyone eight thousand, you know?
But this, this is only what we're referring to here is only a dashboard, what we're talking about. We just received an inch and a half of material. We haven't even looked at this yet and we're about to say who we should use. I mean, come on.
No, that's what I'm asking is how would we, you know, the step is deciding on.
Again, I I will, I will go with councilman, with what Councilman Best suggested is let's have a, a special, special session on this. Let's read through this, through this inch and a half binder and we'll, we'll put together the questions that we have. Yep. And have, and have city ask our questions to them. And based on that, I think we could, out of four, I think we can come up.
And after, after we all read this, we're going to be, we're all going to be armed and loaded and so we'll be out of here in thirty minutes probably. Well, maybe, maybe forty five, but, but, yeah, I think.
Let's, that's, that's fine with me. Let's go ahead and as soon as possible, Erica, can you check with all of us and, and schedule?
Can we hone in it? Are we looking at this week? Next week?
I can do this week.
This week is okay.
I would respectfully do it next week if you don't mind, because I am.
Okay, I am not available. Thursday and Friday of next week, I'll be out of town. So.
Could we, could we, could we do Monday of next week?
I'm fine.
Like away from today?
Monday, March sixth.
Is that all right with everyone? That way we can have it, that'll give us time?
Mayor, should we do it at six?
Six, is that all right with everyone? Let's do that. All right.
We're sixty.
Let's make clear what we're doing here is coming up with our, we're going to review the four search, executive search committees and come up with a decision next Monday as to which committee to go with.
And then we can act from there.
And from there, they start looking for our city.
Questions, we can ask the questions at that point.
Okay, but they're not coming.
No, but we can have.
Questions to Bill to, or Heidi to, or to the company.
Send them to Bill. And and you do, send them to Bill, but I think we would probably invite them to, to attend, at least virtually.
Yeah, by virtual.
That would be wonderful.
Spend any money bringing anyone here.
Agreed.
They, they'll, but they're, they, well, they, remember, they also have active, they're all, you know, I suppose with one of them over the, you know, they were, they're all over the United States when I was, when I was speaking with them. So it's possible they might have a conflict, meeting conflict, but, but I would invite them to participate in a Zoom call.
That would be one on at six next Monday. You're saying, yes, okay, that would be great.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, just thinking ahead, the assistant city manager position is that, and I'll defer to the people that have more experience up here on the days. Is that a position that we've always had or was that a function of the fact that we had a finance director and a city manager that was the same person?
You actually have that by charter and code that you have in ACM.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So nothing else on that, let's move on to the reports by city attorney. No report this evening, Mayor. Okay, city manager?
I'll let Tammy handle the fireworks tonight.
I just want to tell council members that after our workshop meeting and at the advice of mayor and council and some of the speakers, I was able to reach out to the TPO and they were able to extend our grant funding for the parking study.
That's wonderful.
For six months was the maximum they could do. So we'll be, we'll be finished with that study by April of twenty twenty four.
How does that map, map on to the timeline for the, the study itself?
Well, we had one year, so in total to do the entire study. So, so yes. So we'll add another six months on to that. So what we'll, we'll still continue to do that in-house search and 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 gather all of the information that we need to with the consultants that were already hired and then we will go ahead and actually do the study itself. That lasts, you know, as as the last tasks later on at the ending of that.
I think that buys us some critical time. That six months isn't a lot, but I think it it's just enough to be able to, you know, hopefully have more of a sense of the demand after the, the town center project gets up and running.
Thank you, Tammy. That's good to know. And that is another example of how productive that meeting was.
Yes.
Of just having an opportunity to, to talk and to listen to input from residents and business owners and council. Is there anything else?
So one of our neighboring cities contractor had a spill that spilled into the C six canal. And as a result, it contaminated the canal. So along, if you see along the canal bank, you will see lots of signs, danger. Canam, contaminated canal, please no fishing and and no swimming, obviously.
Tammy, could you clarify which one is C six?
The C six canal is the canal that runs along North Royal, South Royal, and on the other side is Okeechobee Road.
Thank you.
So we, Miami Dade County has told us that they are conducting a test of the waters on the, on the canal there. And as soon as they have those results, they'll let us know. But in the meantime, nobody should be boating in the canal. So we, we've shut the, the boat ramp temporarily. So if you have any residents that are reaching out to you as a result of that, then please, you know, explain to them why. That has not in any way, shape or form affected our wa, our drinking water. So we're, we're good with that. It has only affected the, the canal itself. Also, we've been made aware recently that Wassa by way of a plumbing contractor is sending out letters to homeowners. It's a little packet, asking them to fill out some information. Basically is what they're doing is they are working on new lines, water lines. And but they're sending information that is with a permit application of the city, it's pre-filled out information with a brochure of the project. The copies, they weren't very great in in making copies of this, so it looks very shaky, very fraudulent. Indeed, it is not. It is a program that Miami Dade County is asking partic, these particular residences to complete the forms. We actually have a meeting set up tomorrow to get more detail on the project. And as soon as we get that detail, we'll go ahead and make sure that the residents are notified through our social media avenues.
They, they never advise us ahead of time. Similar to the FPL, you know, how FPL came in and did a presentation so that residents, in this case, we found out about it when residents started getting the letters.
I also wanted to announce that over the weekend, the pickle, pickleball courts are now open. Monday through Thursday from seven AM to four PM, thanks to Omar and his team. It's Friday night is pickleball night from six PM to nine PM. It's three dollars per person. Saturday and Sunday, the, the courts are open from sunrise to sunset. The court fees are two dollars beginning from six PM and three dollars after six PM. Saturday, March fourth is pick up, is the pickleball grand opening event from twelve PM, twelve noon to twelve, two PM. The pickleball will be at the tennis court facilities of Miami Springs right there. If you're not familiar with those, they're right there behind the library. We are also collecting non-perishable food items for the seniors pantry at the Adult Community Center. The drop off location is at the, at the center at one oh one Apache, Monday through Friday, eight to four. Also, the Miami Springs Parks and Rec also prevent, presents family movie night, six PM at the golf course. It's a free event, golf cart drive in. If you want to bring your golf cart, they are still welcome, refreshments are for sale by hole nineteen. And the movie will, is still to be determined, correct? Okay. The Miami Springs Historical Society and Museum kickoff dinner gala is six PM to ten PM. You must RSVP by March fourth for this event. And the RSVP information is through Sylvia Batista at three oh five seven nine six forty three ninety one. The members rate is for singles, thirty dollars, family members, forty dollars for two adults. Students is five dollars for any middle schoolers or high schoolers. And the museum and the minimum donation is twenty dollars per person with the membership renewal for for renewal or non-members, so. Sorry, one other thing I have is that I just got it too, is World Thinking Day is March third, Miami Springs Senior Center. It's happening from six thirty to P to eight PM. The Girl Scouts invite our community to celebrate and learn about other cultures.
And Mayor, I, I also finally wanted to address this resident that has been patiently sitting there throughout the whole meeting. As you know, the shade structures at Prince Field was always on our plans with the ARPA money and then when we there was a waiting period because we were waiting to see how much actually we're going to have left over from the ARPA. So we have the funding to do it. I know Omar's already gotten three quotes, which unfortunately are over a hundred thousand, so that means we can't use quotes, we have to issue a full pledge RFP. And that's what we're working on now, but that's always been in the plans is three, right, altogether? Three shade structures for that area, so we're working on the RFP and hopefully soon we'll have those installed for you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, Councilman Best.
I I had the occasion this morning to have to drive my brother-in-law and his wife down to Key Largo. They're bicycling to Key West from there. On the way back, I took US one, I came up through there, I haven't been up that way in a long time, I took the turnpike down. But pickleball is flourishing in Pinecrest right now. I saw like at least six courts that had been converted on my route up US one off to the right. And it was, it was ma, it was maxed out. There was people sitting on the side waiting for games and stuff, so if that's any indication of what we're, what we're going to experience here, it's a good thing. So I welcome that. The high school baseball season has started. We started last week. I appreciate the city's assistance and and the announcement aspect of it. They, they set us up with the, with the tent and everything and and we do the games. You might want to tell the chief, William, that next Tuesday, the Springs High School is playing Berlin Jesuit. I know he went to high school there, so and I, I don't think we've ever played in it before, at least in recent times. And finally, I don't know if you guys like going to seminars and stuff, I mean, sitting through this is enough, right? But I have done one a year ago at the Blessed, at the Catholic Church and I ran it for six weeks. Well, I'm commencing one starting tomorrow night on Judeo-Christianity. It's a very interesting topic, goes back many thousands of years. And it's, it's, it's most enlightening. Seven o'clock, we're going to be doing it for an hour for four Tuesdays in a row. So with that, have a great week. Thank you, Mayor.
I have nothing to report. I'll see you at a pickleball happy hour. Councilman Fihad?
Yeah, William stole my thunder because I was going to ask if, for the benefit of Jamal, if we knew where, because I knew that the shade structures were on the queue, so I was going to ask you for an update, but now that you, you did it, then that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Omar, how did we do in pickleball? We're talking about it. Let's find out how we did.
Actually, I was by there Saturday morning. And I sent Tammy and William both pictures and there was already about eight to twelve people there at eight in the morning playing pickleball. Wow. So we had a decent crowd all weekend. I've gotten a lot of phone calls and, and people interested in when our happy hour is on Friday. And they're already starting to ask for more. Uh, and they're already starting to ask for more courts.
Cool.
Wonderful.
It's gonna, I think it's huge. I think it's actually really good for the city. Um, we have someone that's gonna come out on Friday morning at eight o'clock to do a clinic, uh, to teach some of our older, um, retired pickleball players how to use the court a little bit more wisely, uh, do the mobility and stuff like that. This gentleman's a professional pickleball player that lives in the beach and he's gonna come down to a clinic for free. So we're already starting to create momentum with the program. Uh, so I expect it to flourish pretty quickly. Uh, but yeah, we're looking forward to a lot of pickleball players in the next couple of months, and hopefully long-term.
Good work, Omar. Thank you.
Thank you guys for the support.
Nice addition to the recreation department.
Yes, it's going great.
We.
Play that. Good night. Amen. The good news to yours.
We keep, uh, upping the fun factor in Miami Springs. And Omar and his crew are, are great at that with the, um, the pickleball and the, um, golf cart drive-in movie. That's, that's gonna be so much fun. Um, I have nothing to add, except I just wanted to, um, uh, to mention that the women's club is having on March ninth, they're having a, a candidate's forum for, um, the election. So it's at seven o'clock and it's at the Rebecca Sosa Theater. So I want to encourage all the residents who would like to, um, go and, and hear, you know, we have elections coming up April fourth. So, um, you know, this is an opportunity to, to listen to the candidates, to meet with them, to hear them answer some questions. And it's, um, next Thursday, a week from, not this Thursday, the following one, eight, uh, March ninth at seven PM at the Rebecca Sosa Theater. And with that, thank you all for a good meeting. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Tell me if this city has a best word. We have, we have. We have a, um, consultant as an arbiter. We don't have an in-house.